So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start in two minutes. If I could ask you to take your seats. Thank you so much for attending on a beautiful summer night. Please turn off your cell phones to avoid any interruptions in the program. And we'll get started in two minutes, please. And just a reminder, if you do not want your photo taken, please let the Surrey Board of Trade staff know we are using tonight's photos for both internal and external publications. Okay, everyone, let's get started. I'm Anita Huberman. I'm CEO of the Surrey Board of Trade. And welcome to our third federal election Business Town Hall, this time with Canada's NDP leader, Mr Jagmeet Singh, who I'll introduce shortly. Ladies and gentlemen, you are going to have a chance to ask questions of Mr Singh. And I want you to be very respectful in your questions. It's all about learning his economic platform and what his platform means to Surrey, British Columbia. Surrey is going to be the largest city in British Columbia in less than 20 years. And there are many investments and much-needed focus that is needed by Ottawa, not only on Surrey, but all of British Columbia. So I wanted to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional and unceded territory of our Coast Salish people, specifically the Kwautlin, Katzie, Semiamu, and Tawasun First Nations. Thank you so much to our Business and International Trade Centre sponsors, because we can't hold events like this without sponsorship support. So the law firm of Fasken, the accounting firm of PWC, and the Chambers of Commerce Group Insurance Plan by SNF Benefits. I'd also be remiss in not thanking our sponsor. Again, corporate sponsors are everything to the Surrey Board of Trade. Please help me thank the Vancouver Fraser Port Authority for their sponsorship tonight. And our marketing sponsor, the Surrey Now Leader Media Group. I'd also like to recognize Peter Julian, MP for New West Burnaby. Thank you so much for attending, Peter. Jagroot Rawr, MLA for Surrey Fleetwood is here. And our Surrey Board of Trade directors, our immediate past chair, Dr Greg Thomas, our vice chair, Belgie Dollywall, and our board director and chair of our transportation team, Mr Rory Morgan. Let's give them a round of applause, please. So to introduce our honored guest this evening. Jagmeet Singh grew up in Scarborough, St. John's, and Windsor. He served as an Ontario MP from 2011 until 2017. On October 1st, 2017, he became leader of Canada's NDP. I'm thrilled he's made time in his very busy schedule to join us today right here in Surrey.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the warm welcome. Thank you very much, Anita. Good afternoon, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Yes? Okay. Excellent. Don't ask if I'm honored to be here. For me, every time I find the opportunity to talk with people, to share our voices, our ideas, it makes my heart ache to have the opportunity to do that. I want to also, just before I get any further, acknowledge that we're on the traditional territories of the First People of this land. In this case, we're on the traditional territories of the Coast Salish people. And in specific, we're on the lands of the Kwautlin, the Katzie, the Semiamu, and Tawasun First Nations. And when we acknowledge the First Nations, the lands that we're gathered on to share some ideas and to get to know each other, to ask some questions, and hopefully have some fun as well. We do that on the lands of people that continue to face injustice. And in acknowledging the lands, we should also acknowledge our commitment to working towards true and honest reconciliation and justice for the First People of this land. Thank you. I want to just take a moment to also acknowledge the Board of Trade. The Surrey Board of Trade does great work in representing its members. And thank them for putting on today's event with all the sponsors. So let's give them a little love and appreciation for their hard work. If I can also indulge you for a moment to acknowledge some of my candidates that are here today, because they're putting their name forward and it's a tough race. Oh, before I do that, I've got to acknowledge my dear friend in the front row here. Peter Julian is one of my best friends. And my neighboring Member of Parliament, so give some love to Peter Julian. Good thing I saw you, Peter. I also want to acknowledge some of our candidates. We've got Annie O'Hanna. We're in her riding, her future riding, I'm hoping. The candidate for Fleetwood Portcells. We've got Sajid Saran is the candidate for Surrey Centre. We were just chatting outdoors. We've got Harjit Singh Gill, candidate for Surrey Newton here as well. So I just want to talk briefly. Most of the time, I want to spend just really hearing from your questions. But I want to talk a bit about what's at stake. We're noticing more and more people are working hard. And I hear from that every day. And across this country, people are working harder and harder. And despite working hard, it feels like they aren't able to get ahead. Bills pile up and it's just difficult to get ahead. And it's a number of things. The cost of housing is obviously a big concern. Health care is often not there for people when they need it. When you go to the hospital, it turns out the waiting times are very long and it's difficult to get the care that we need. Whether it's our telecom bills, or cellphone, or internet bills. There's just costs that keep on mounting and it's harder and harder to pay those bills. And at the same time, this is one of the things I think is really important. I want to really highlight, at a time when people are finding it harder to get by, in Ottawa, we see governments, whether they're conservative or liberal, and they seem to just focus on making life better for the multi-billion dollar corporations. And they end up making it harder for everyone else. And that seems to be an ongoing trend. But I don't think it has to be that way. I think it's time for us to have a partner, a champion, that stands up for working-class people, for small businesses, that puts the needs of the people who need help first and not continue to make life easier for those who already have it so easy. So for small businesses, there's a lot that we can do to support and make life easier. We've got a vision and a number of commitments to do that. We want to cap merchant fees, which would help a lot of small businesses. We want to cap that at 1%. So a small business that's struggling to get ahead, they have to pay merchant fees. And they end up paying a lot to the powerful and wealthy banks. We want to cap that and make it more affordable for small and medium-sized businesses. We also want to make sure we make the right investments to make life easier for businesses. And one of those investments is in making sure that we expand our healthcare system to include medication coverage for all. Our view and our vision for Canada, our commitment to Canada is this. If you need medication in Canada, you should use your health card, not your credit card. And that's something we can achieve. And I think that would make a massive difference in people's lives. I also believe that this is going to save us a lot of money for businesses. It's one of the biggest costs for insurance plans and benefits are the drug costs. If we used our buying power as a nation, we could actually save employers a lot of money. In fact, we've costed it out and a lot of experts have looked at it and says, and they say that roughly, we could save about $600 per employee. That could be a significant savings for business, another cost advantage for investing in Canada. I know a number of boards, a number of Board of Commerce has endorsed this idea of medication for all. It's something we are committed to, not in the distant future, like some other folks have maybe talked about a distant promise. We want to get it done in one year. It's achievable. We've got a plan to make it happen. In addition, we want to make sure small businesses are given the respect they deserve. And one of the areas where it's tough for small businesses is when you want to transfer the family business to a family member. There is a really unfair tax treatment that happens. And it's easier, in fact, to sell the business to someone you don't know than it is to pass it on to a family member. And for farms or other small businesses where people want to pass it on to the next generation who want to continue the business, it shouldn't be harder to pass it on to your family who want to continue with the business. There shouldn't be that unfair tax treatment. We put forward a bill that would end that unfair tax treatment and make sure that there's a level playing field. I want to wrap it up and just say, I want you to know that New Democrats, we will be partners for people, partners for small and medium-sized businesses. We'll be partners to make sure the economy works better for everyone. We're not going to focus on making the economy work for the multi-billionaires and those billion-dollar corporations. We're going to make sure it works for you. And I think that's something that we haven't seen in Ottawa and something we deserve and we need. And that's what I'm committed to doing. And as you know, any big initiative, if you want to make a change, like improving our healthcare system, making sure young people have a bright future, making sure families aren't seeing this economy continue to work, not for them, but for the ultra-rich, it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of us working together. So this is where I'm going to need your help to bring in these changes. And I know we can do it together. I'm really optimistic about the future. I really believe we can turn things around. If we had the right choices, if we made the right priorities, we could really lift up the way things are going and turn things around and give people that hope and that optimism that they deserve. And I'm confident we can do it together. Thank you so much.
So Jagmeet, we have some questions for you. And actually, you can just stay at the podium. So ladies and gentlemen, it is your turn from the audience to ask Mr Jagmeet Singh. Remember to be very respectful. Indicate your name, your company name, as tonight's session is being recorded. But I'd just like to start off with a question, Jagmeet. Is, if you become Prime Minister, how are you going to deal with the guy in the South there in the United States?
Thank you. I get that question all the time. I think it's something that's on a lot of people's minds. There's a lot of volatility, a lot of unpredictability. But I think that we've seen in the past, when someone is a bully, when someone wants a lot of attention, and when someone is reckless and irresponsible, it doesn't help to cater to that. It doesn't help to allow that to continue or to humor it. I think you've got to stand up and say, hey, it's wrong. It's wrong to propagate beliefs that are divisive. It's wrong to allow a message of hate to embolden other people to go out and continue that hate. It's wrong to have messages of misogyny and xenophobia. These are just things that are wrong. We've got to stand up. And I think one of the things that's not really talked about enough is that in a lot of ways, United States relies on Canada. We are one of the biggest trading partners, but there's a lot of benefits that Americans actually derive from trade with Canada. In fact, most recently, we've seen governors of states protest and be very disappointed in what's happening at the central level, at the federal level, because the decisions that Mr Trump is making are actually hurting the businesses and the manufacturers in states across the United States. So I think there's a potential for us to work with governors, to work with the state-level representatives better. There is an opportunity for us to stand up and say, what is wrong is wrong, and not back down from that. And there's an opportunity for us to really provide some leadership at the global stage. There's been a lot of folks that are concerned about what's going on and are uncertain about what to do. We can provide that certainty and say, hey, in Canada, you can be rest assured that we will call out what is wrong and we will stand up for justice and fairness. And we'll make sure people are put first. One of the clear examples we have right now is the recently negotiated NAFTA deal, the newly negotiated NAFTA deal, was a deal that was actually worse for workers. And instead of calling it out and saying, this is a bad deal, in fact, it's worse than the previous deal, Mr Trudeau wanted to go ahead with it. And Mr Trump loved it. He thought it was a great deal. But it turns out, once the House changed and there was a number of Democratic senators and Congress people that were elected, we found that they were working hard to improve some of the changes to make sure that we had a level playing field. If Canadian workers and manufacturers have a level playing field, we can compete with anyone in the world. And we need to have that level playing field, which means the same economic rights for workers, the same workers' rights, the same environmental protections. If we have those, we can compete with anyone in the world. So long answer, short, we've got to stand up to a bully. I'm ready to do that.
So just go to the microphones and ask your questions. And I'll recognize you in turn, otherwise I'm going to keep asking.
Anita, actually, can I drop one thing real quick?
Of course.
I always take a chance. Is it better if I speak into? This is actually working, isn't it? There's my lapel mic working. You let me know. Or is it better here? Oh, it's better here? Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, cool. One quick thing, Anita, I didn't get a chance to tell you. But if you could spread the word for me. My name is spelt with an A, but it's pronounced with a U. So it's jug like hug and meet like we meet each other. So it's jugmeet. And it means friend to the world. So when I hear Jagmeet, I hear friend to the world, and it makes me smile a bit. And so just, there you go.
Hi, Jagmeet. My name is Jaspreet Singh and I'm a product manager, working for Schneider Electric here. I moved to Canada last year from San Francisco and I'm loving it. You know, it's one of the best countries to live. I do have one question for you. And I think a lot of global leaders are facing the same challenge, whether it be India, US, or anywhere else in Europe, is job creation and job retention. Creation is one thing, but retention in US and specifically North American region is a big issue, because companies are moving jobs away from Canada, US, or Europe offshore countries for low cost and low labor. So how do you envision that you will bring and retain jobs in Canada, or British Columbia included, via science, technology, or innovation, bringing industry partners together, or attracting corporations, or promoting a culture of startups, which is what I've seen in San Francisco? And people have a lot of hyping jobs. There's a lot of innovation. There's a lot of technology-oriented jobs to pay for people living in high-cost-of-living areas. So how do you envision to create and retain jobs in Canada? And what are your thoughts on that?
Sure, thank you. Great question. Thank you very much. Give it up to the question then. So the build, so really what we're talking about is how do we build the climate that creates the opportunity for jobs to be created? What can we do? And I think it takes acknowledging that there's a lot of talented people that come to Canada. Our immigration system brings in incredible, talented, experienced people. We've got a great education system here in Canada, which means that we've got some of the most educated and well-trained workforce in the world. And despite that, we see sometimes what people call the brain drain. We lose people to other jurisdictions. But more troubling, we see the rise of work being shifted to low-wage sectors. And that's happening often in manufacturing sectors, where there'd be a robust manufacturing sector in Canada, only to see a company leave to go to a lower-cost jurisdiction. And what happens is, trade agreements are actually a part of the reason. When we sign trade agreements, for example, the North American Trade Agreement, where GM, I'll give you a quick example of a manufacturer, had one of the best-performing factories in Oshawa. If you see any sedan Cadillacs, they were built in Oshawa. And it was a factory that was award-winning. High standards of safety, productivity. They were meeting and exceeding all the metrics and they were winning awards. They were not losing any profits for the company. They were actually, in fact, exceeding what they were expected to do. Despite that, GM shut down all the manufacturing essentially in Oshawa to move to Mexico. And the only reason was they wanted to make more profit. So this is what's happening. Even though workers are working hard and are exceeding their goals, companies can sometimes just up and leave. So there's some things that we can do at a government level to create policies that actually give us the better outcomes. I think many things that we see are the results of decisions that we make. We make a certain decision, we get a certain outcome. A certain policy results in a certain thing happening. I really care about working people having a good opportunity to thrive in Canada. So we've got a couple of different ways to do that. On the manufacturing front, one example that really offends me, we've got one of the best train-building companies in the world, Bombardier. World-renowned, makes incredible trains and airplanes. Now, we own a Crown Corporation via rail that is our train company for Canada. It's publicly owned. We all own it. They needed to buy new trains. There was a billion-dollar contract. You would think that we would use our public dollars for a publicly-owned Crown Corporation, a business that we own. We would use our public dollars to encourage manufacturing in Canada. Well, you'd be wrong. Because what happened is, under this current government, they signed a contract to buy a billion dollars' worth of trains from a German company, Siemens. Now, that to me is just outrageously wrong. All other countries in the world have buy-in their own country provisions. So what I'm calling for is a procurement process. If we're using our public dollars, this is something where we're buying something for our own companies, something like via rail. We should make sure we've got procurement process. So the way we actually buy things should include "Made in Canada" content requirements. That would ensure that we're actually creating jobs in Canada, supporting industry in Canada, and ensuring that there is a manufacturing sector that continues to thrive. That's a clear thing that we can do. Other jurisdictions have done it. There's no reason why we can't do it here in Canada. That's one clear policy that we could implement that would ensure that we actually support manufacturing in Canada. I made that announcement about a month ago in Thunder Bay, at the site of where Bombardier makes some of the best trains in the world. And I said, this is offensive. This is wrong, that we're going to see workers lose their job, when on the other hand, we just spent a billion dollars on trains, but it's not going to Canadian jobs or workers. That's one clear example. On the innovative front, one of the things that we want to do is we want to bring in a climate bank. And it's something that I spoke to a lot of entrepreneurs in the clean energy sector or the renewable energy sector. They said, we don't need subsidies. What we want is actually access to capital. If we had access to capital, we could actually grow our business. And for us, that's what we really need. We know other countries have done this. They set up funds that companies can access at low-interest rates to access capital to expand their business. So we've proposed a climate bank, which will be publicly-owned, publicly-funded, and allow companies to access capital, funds, so they can grow their business. That would encourage companies to set up in Canada, create an encouragement for the type of businesses we know are going to be the businesses of the future. Renewable energy is going to be more and more important, not less and less important. So that's one really concrete where we can do that. But we also need to look at where the world is moving. We know that AI is coming in. And we know that automation is going to disrupt a lot of employment. So we've got to find ways to make sure workers are supported and protected. But we also create an opportunity where we are actually ahead of the curve in these different sectors, whether it's innovation on the technological front, whether it's in health sciences, whether it's in manufacturing, whether it's in renewable energy. So I think one of the focuses we have to do is look ahead and see where the trends are and how can we put in place strategic investments to support those trends so that we're actually ahead of the curve, not falling behind. So those are just some of the ideas that I think would help us build a more robust future and a better economy. I also, just on the last one, I think that that healthcare argument, having a competitive healthcare system is a competitive advantage for businesses. They have to pay for their employees' benefits. If we cover those, we actually create a climate where businesses want to set up here. We know recently, in a bid for a major multinational, they looked at some of the criteria and they found that they would save significantly just because of a universal healthcare. We could also create a more competitive environment by including medication coverage. Thank you. And I promise my next question, my answer is going to be shorter, because I want to get more. Sorry, but I just kind of went on and on, because I was getting excited.
We still have a lot of time for questions. So Jagmeet, I wanted to let you know that we have the most number of manufacturers in British Columbia, right here in Surrey. A third of our population is under the age of 19. So whenever, we're just in the middle of the Cascadia Innovation Corridor, trying to bridge those ties. And we have a thriving health technology industry cluster that is just amazing with business incubation, new technology, robotics, just leading edge.
That's amazing.
Hello, my name is Zach, no business affiliation. And I would like to know, because a lot of people like to pit oil and gas workers against environmentalists, so I would like to know, how will you ensure that oil and gas workers are not left behind and included in the green economy?
Thank you very much for the question. Great question. Absolutely, absolutely. We can't leave anyone behind. And I think that's such a good way to frame it. It's about, I mean, really, we need to build an economy where no one's left behind. If someone's being left behind, then we're not doing our job. And that's really what it comes down to. In terms of values, as a new Democrat, as a leader of this party, I really believe we can't leave anyone behind. So I remember someone I met recently, so it really creates an image in my mind. I was doing a transit through Calgary to Vancouver. And I had a stopover in Calgary. And I had a bagel, I think a great Canadian bagel. There was a young man that said, hey, can you come over? I want to take a picture with you. Took a picture and we started chatting. He told me that he worked in the resource sector in Alberta. And he said that his dad worked as a laborer and he wanted to upgrade his future, so he became an engineer. But he said, you know what? I'm worried about my job. I've got this great degree and I got hired, but I'm not certain if I'm going to be able to keep this job in the future because of the ups and downs in my sector. And he said to me, he said, I thought I would be better off than my dad, because I became an engineer and my dad was a laborer. And my dad tells me that he also went through ups and downs. And you know, this is 15 years ago, 20 years ago. He's like, my dad told me stories about, you know, when there was bust times, things were going really poorly, there was boom times, things went really well. He said, I thought I would be excluded from those ups and downs if I got better education, but I'm still going through the same thing. And I looked him in the eyes and said, you know what? That's wrong. It's wrong that no matter how hard you work, no matter how hard you struggle to get a good education, you still have to go through busts and booms. You still have to go through random volatility through no fault of your own. And you're not alone. There's so many workers that are working in the oil sands or resource sectors that work so hard, and regardless of how hard they work, through no fault of their own, they end up losing their jobs. And then that means that they can't pay their bills and they're worried about keeping their homes. And that to me is just plain wrong. And so I told them, I said, I'm committed to doing something that makes sure that you have a sustainable future. That you don't have to go through these busts and booms. We've got to make commitments and investments and make sure that you don't go through these volatility. So what can we do with our public dollars? Well, we can take those skilled workers and create opportunities for them to have work when they go through the commodity fluctuations. Because we know that there are certain oil producers that could turn up their production tomorrow and that would drive down the cost of the resource in Canada. And it would mean, no matter what policies we had, people would lose their jobs. So what we need to do is make sure there's opportunities for those people to work, those electricians, those plumbers, those skilled trade workers. So what we're saying is, we want to build two programs. One is, we want to build half a million new affordable homes across our country. Affordable housing is a struggle and we've got people with skills. We could put those skilled trades to work, building new affordable homes. Rental units, cooperative housing, non-market housing. We could put those workers to work. The second thing we want to do is we want to retrofit every home and building in Canada to reduce our emissions. This is a commitment. But it also is a way public dollars can be used. We can use our money to invest in cities to make them have lower emissions, but also create jobs in communities. You can't offshore energy retrofit. If we want to retrofit a building, put in better insulation, better electrical systems, install solar panels, these are jobs that are built in community. So same skills that people have in resource sectors can be used in retrofitting homes. So that's one of the strategies, where we take those skills from the workers that are out there that are going through ups and downs because of no fault of their own. We can actually put them to work in a sector that's going to be sustainable. We want to invest in this for the next 50 years. And we know that this is going to help in a massive way in terms of returning on the investment. It's going to reduce our emissions, create jobs, save money for families and businesses. That's what we're committed to doing. We want to leave no worker or community behind.
Hi, Jagmeet. I'm Emma, and I have no business affiliation, but I'm a new voter, so.
Oh, cool.
My question is, we see that this government's carbon tax that they put in, it means high gas prices for a lot of British Colombians, especially in the Lower Main Line. We're seeing a lot of extremely high gas prices that are making it hard for new drivers like myself to go on the roads and drive. So I want to ask, how are you going to make sure that gas prices stay affordable, but also stay on track to meet the agreements of the Paris Agreement that we signed?
Thank you for the question. That is a tough balance to strike. I appreciate that you put it out there in that balanced way. What we're seeing is, when it comes to oil/gas prices, there seems to be pretty obviously, you know, when a weekend comes along, a long weekend comes along, all of a sudden, we see the prices go up for gas, right after the long weekend, they come back down. We're pretty certain that there seems to be some sort of collusion going on when it comes to oil prices. So what we're proposing is setting up a federal watchdog to watch these prices, to be very closely monitoring any cases of collusion, and to ensure that we have the fair prices being set. Because we're pretty certain that that's not the case. It doesn't seem like things are fair. On top of that, I think because your comment included the concern around the Paris Agreements, you would agree with me, and I think many people in this room would agree, that there is a price to pollution. Like when we pollute, when government, not we, I guess when we as well, but when businesses pollute, there is a price to that. If a business pollutes into water, there's a price, because we can't drink the water. If a business pollutes into the air, there's a price, because we can't breathe the air. Or it increases greenhouse gases that result in a warming climate, which has massive impacts. Right now, we just saw reports, one of the important ways of life. Right now, we just saw reports, one of the important ways of life, sorry, one of the important ways of life for British Columbia are salmon. And really sad news, the Chinook and Saukai that were supposed to arrive at the river were projected to be, for Saukai, in the $4.5 million, oh, million dollar, 4.5 million number of Saukai, or Chinook, and then for Saukai, it was supposed to be in the $2 million. Instead, it was only $600,000. And in this case, it's largely being attributed to climate change because of increasing warmer oceans, certain algae are blooming, which reduces the amount of food that the salmon have. So we're seeing a real cost. But what's happening with the current price on pollution, the current carbon tax, it entirely exempts the biggest polluters. So the people that are polluting the most, the companies that are polluting the most are exempt, but families, they're not exempt, they're kind of paying their price. There is a refund, which helps out families, but really, families have to bear the burden, but the biggest polluters don't. So what I would do is, we need to make sure that the biggest polluters are paying their fair share, that they're actually paying the burden of the pollution that they're causing, and that it actually will help reduce emissions if we do that. We also need to make sure we use the revenue to reinvest in helping out families that are struggling, young people like you, but also we use some of that money to help transition to a greener economy, a cleaner economy. So we use some of that money to make it easier to get access to electrical cars, or that we electrify transportation, or we make public transit even better. So we've got to use the funds that we get to do something to actually help make life better for people, reduce emissions, but also make life easier. So public transit, better housing that's got lower emissions, these are some of the things we can do. So we do need to put a price on pollution, but we need to do it in a way that's fair, that doesn't put all the burden on families and young people like yourself, that put the pressure on those who are polluting the most. And I think that's what we need to do and what I'm committed to doing. Thanks so much.
Hi, I'm Alicia Fisher, I'm with Primarica.
Hi.
So my biggest focus in my business is helping families become financially independent. I know you touched base a little bit on affordable housing, but our current market right now is a very big financial burden for all of those who are living in it right now. Do you have any plans to help out the people that are currently living in the economy? Because the costs are astronomical, even with the right financial education, it's still a stretch for people to be able to save and become financially independent, or even hope to own a house, especially with the new stress tests to get a mortgage.
I hear you. Thank you very much for the question. Really, really good question. I think it touches on what a lot of people are going through. I met with some young professionals, met with moms and dads, and the concern around being able to afford affordable housing is massive, and it touches a lot of people. Before I go any further, I'm just going to pause because I just, I noticed two things. One is, though Anita, you acknowledged, I didn't get a chance to acknowledge the MLA and my friend Jagru that's here. There is Jagru Bar. Thank you. And I also want to acknowledge, because what reminded me that I didn't get a chance to shout out Jagru, is because our minister just walked in, Ginny Sims. So if you can give a shout out to the minister for immigration here in BC. And my friend really slickly gave me a great note. Wow, thank you so much. He also put in Jagru Bar, so thank you for that. But I forgot to acknowledge two other candidates. Steven Crozier is here, who's our candidate in Surrey White Rock. Thank you for doing that, my friend. And Stacy Wakelin, who's our candidate in Langley, Alderweireld. Hi Stacy. This is what you need, a friend like Peter in your life. Peter is really awesome. Okay, back to your question, though. Sorry about that, Emily. So this is really one of the, I would say this is the biggest concern that I hear. I hear many concerns. Without any doubt, the single most consistent concern that I hear from people is housing. It's so much, though, that I was in Langley, or not in Langley, I was in Langford, suburb of Victoria. And in Langford, I was hanging out at a high school, speaking to young people about their concerns. And they said things that I expected, like they were concerned about the environment and climate crisis. They mentioned they were worried about going to university and the cost of tuition, things that I expected that they would be worried about. I was sad that they were worried about tuition fees, but I know that's a real fear. But then, three students mentioned housing, and it kind of kept on coming up. So I thought, these are students between grade 10 and grade 12. And I tried to think back, when I was in grade 10 and grade 12, the things that I was worried about, and I had heard worries about the environment at that time, and, you know, thinking about going to school was on my mind, but I didn't think about housing until later on, I ended up losing my home because my family went into really horrible debt, different story. But I didn't think about housing when I was in high school. And because three students brought it up, I then said, okay, wait a second, there seems to be a trend here, just out of curiosity. And I asked this crowd of about 200, 300 students in a high school, and take this, this is the suburb of Victoria, this is in Langford. And I asked them, how many of you are worried about housing? If you are, could you stand up? And nearly every student stood up. And then I was taken back that young people are worried about this, like they're not even in the market for housing yet, but it's a real concern. And so we're taking it really seriously. This is a serious problem that needs to be dealt with seriously. So we've got a couple of really important measures to take on this problem. One is, we're seeing that money laundering is directly causing, one of the causing factors for the -- is one of the direct factors that is driving up the cost astronomically. There's many factors, I'm going to touch a bunch of them, but money laundering is one of them. And in BC, they were able to attribute at least 5% of the rising costs to money laundering. And that's absolutely something that the federal government should do something about. The BC NDP has taken some steps, which is really encouraging, but we looked into it at the federal level, from the time of Mr. Harper to now, with Mr. Trudeau, under both conservative and liberal governments, there is a money laundering division, a federal money laundering division, that does no work on money laundering. So they have a division that's set up, it's got funding, but it hasn't been doing anything to tackle money laundering. So I would immediately change that and say, we've got to tackle this. That's one really important thing we've got to do. We've seen that the foreign buyer tax has helped in bringing down some of the astronomical costs. We want to bring that in at the federal level. So these are some of the things we can do to control some of the astronomical rising of costs. We also need to make sure that there's an option for people. And I remember I met this young, or later age woman, and she had raised her family, and she lived in a co-op house. And she said to me, I asked her actually, I said, what did it mean to you to have this place, you live in this, it was a beautiful place, and she lived in this nice, kind of like a townhouse in this cooperative unit? What did it mean for you to be able to live in this co-op? And she said, well, if I can be honest with you, I wouldn't have been able to afford a place in the Lower Mainland. For me, having a co-op house, and she was a professional, she had a good job, but she just like, I couldn't save up enough. She had some family situations, she had to be separated from her husband, but there's no way I could have saved up enough. Because I had access to this affordable option, I was able to build a life for myself and for my kids. And now my kids have gone off, and they're studying, and they're on working, but I was able to build a life for myself. I want to build half a million affordable homes. I want to create an opportunity for people to have an option, where if they can't afford to buy, they can have a place to live, which is secure, which is quality, which is affordable. It's not half of their income, it's affordable, it's within their means, and they can save up if they choose to buy a home, or they can continue to stay there. But having that affordable option is really important to me, and that's why I'm taking this very seriously. I'll just quickly share with you, my dad was a doctor, so we were pretty financially secure for most of my life when I was a kid. But then my dad fell ill to an illness, he was addicted, and the addiction meant that he lost his job, and he lost his ability to work, and we went into really big debt as a family. And so much so that we couldn't keep the house, until we lost our home. And there was a time in my life where I remember we had nowhere to live, and I had to call my relatives to ask them if I could live with them. And it was tough, because I remember calling relatives and them saying, you know, we wish we could, but we're also in a tough way, and they had to say no. And I know it broke their heart to say no to me, it broke my heart to hear it, but we eventually found a place to live, but it was tough. If you can't find a place to live, if you can't have housing, really nothing else matters. If you can't have a place over your roof, over your head, and you don't know where you're going to be living tomorrow, you can't do anything else. And so it is so important to me for us to tackle this problem, and I really thank you for the question.
My name is Parvati Sohal, I'm a family physician here in Surrey. My question is on small business, which I own as well, and as you know, the current government has passed a lot of bills, you know, which are not really helping the small business, and there were a lot of opposition when they were passing those bills. What would you do to reverse or help the small business?
Sure, thank you very much. Thank you for your question. So I think it's really fair the way you put it. A lot of small businesses are feeling like things are even harder, and things have become a lot easier for some of the people at the very top. And we'll give you a quick example. You're struggling as a small, or you're finding it harder as a small business owner, and a lot of people here, I'm sure if you ask them, are things harder now than they were before, they'll say to you, yep, things are a bit harder for us now. But if you look at the choices, the priorities of this government and previous governments, Mr. Trudeau, you know, everyone knows about the SNC scandal, I want you to look at it not as a scandal, though. It was a choice. Mr. Trudeau chose to break the conflict of interest law, he chose to break the law to help out a multi-billion dollar corporation that was faced with a criminal charge, a charge that was laid by Canadian investigators. The RCMP investigated SNC and charged them with corruption and bribery charges, criminal charges. Now, if a small business is charged with corruption or bribery, they can't call up the prime minister and say, hey, can you help us out? We got charged with corruption and bribery. They would have to go to court. Well, in the case of SNC Lavalin, this multi-billion dollar corporation, they were able to call up the prime minister and get the prime minister to change the law to create an option where they could pay a fine instead of going to court. So that was already done. That is enough to show the choices that this government makes. But it wasn't, it didn't end there. It went beyond that. They also had an attorney general said, okay, this may be, there may be an option for a fine, but the prosecutor, the head prosecutor of Canada, and me, after reviewing the case, believed that this company should go to court, that it should go to court and be held accountable in a court of law, and be accountable for if they were guilty or not, they should go to court. Mr. Trudeau and his office then applied pressure to get the attorney general to change her mind, and applied undue pressure, so much so that the conflict or the ethics commissioner found that he broke the law in doing so. That is a choice that this government, Mr. Trudeau, made to make it easier for the multi-billion dollar corporations while your life is not being easier. That is a choice. We would make different choices. I can tell you very clearly, we would not choose to help SNC Lavalin, we would not choose to help a multi-billion dollar corporation be not held liable for potentially violating Canadian law. We would make sure that they're held to account, and instead, we would make sure life is easier for small businesses. One of the things that we're looking at is, there's a lot of unnecessary red tape for small businesses. It's hard to start up the business, it's hard to maintain the business. My brother started up a small business a couple of years ago, before he got into politics. He started up a restaurant. It was called GT Road, and they made delicious pronte. Now, I kind of wish the place was still running because the food was great. But when he was setting up the company, there was so much unnecessary red tape in setting it up, a lot of things that we could actually streamline and make easier. So that's one thing we would do. We would look at, how can we make our current system more streamlined, more efficient, so that businesses don't have to go through so much red tape and so much unnecessary bureaucracy to get their job done? There's ways to streamline that, that's something that we would look at. We also want to make sure that our taxation system is fair, and it means that those who can pay, pay their fair share, and it's not unduly hard on those who are struggling to get by. It encourages small and medium sized businesses, but it makes sure that the people at the very top, they have to pay their fair share. Right now, we know the current system is such that there's offshore tax havens, CEO loopholes, all sorts of advantages if you're a multi-billioner, those advantages don't exist for everyone else. We'd make sure that we clean up the system to make sure it's fair and works justly, and doesn't allow the wealthiest to get away while everyone else has to pay their fair share.
Jayveen Katri, I work for Make Your Mind Training and Consulting. Mr. Singh, thank you for coming out today, first things first. I want to switch gears here from the economic discussion, and I want to ask more of a personal question.
Sure.
Being a politician, you come from a place of service, you have a lot of platform issues and whatnot, but what I wanted to know is, what are you most passionate about personally?
Oh, wow, okay. Thank you for the question, that's really nice. I guess, if I could put it this way, I'm really passionate about making sure that people have hope in their lives. Because I met a lot of young people, and instead of having hope, they're worried, they're afraid. And it really, it hurts to think of a young person not having hope, and I see Annie nodding because she's a teacher and she sees this a lot. But a lot of young people, like this is the best time of their life, they're about to embark on their next journey, you know, going onto a career, hopefully pursuing something that they love and giving back in a way that makes them feel happy, but also helps them build a good life. And I'm really worried that young people are not optimistic and hopeful, but they're afraid of the future. And that fear of the future, I say young people feel it the most, but it's something that everyone feels. Like it's not limited to young people. That fear of the future is something that parents are now saying, ah, what do I do? My kids, I don't know how to take care of them and help them get a home because housing is so expensive. You know, a lot of people are just looking at the future with worry. And the reason why this is a big deal for me is, I know that there's going to be some leaders that are going to use that fear and that worry that people have, and they're going to use it to divide us. Because if we're worried and afraid about the future, it's easy for someone to come along, some other leader to come along and say, you know what, you're worried about the future, you can't find housing, you can't find a job. Well, you know what? It's that New Canadians' fault. It's that refugees' fault. And they can spread misinformation about it, they can tell people all sorts of lies, but because people are afraid, and it's easy to be manipulated maybe when you're afraid, because you can just have this one specific fault, you can point the finger and say, it's that brown skinned person's fault. That, to me, is really scary. And so it's not enough, in my mind, to say no to policies like, you know, Mr. Bernier putting up, or maybe someone else who put up, no to mass immigration, as kind of like a fear mongering tactic. It's not enough to say no to that. We also have to get at the economic insecurity people feel. Because if people are feeling insecure economically, if people can't find a home, they can't find a job, then they're going to be exploited. And that's why, that's one of my biggest fears, that I'm worried about that. And on a really, really personal note, I touched on this, but I can tell you, when my family went through some struggles, my dad, like I said, he was addicted, he had a private insurance when he was a doctor. He was able to afford private insurance, and there was times when he went and got rehab, got better, went back to work, was healthy, and then after a couple of years, fell back to in the addiction and was unable to work again. At the end stage of when he was finally unable to work anymore, I got a call from my mom, I was taking care of my brother, because things at home were unsafe, that's my phone, my bad. When things were unsafe at home, my brother was living with me, and I remember getting a call from my mom saying, you know, my dad, you know, your dad can't work anymore, he's been suspended, he's really unwell. And that went on for about almost 10 years. And at the end of those 10 years, my dad went from about 180 pounds to about 100 pounds. And he was a, you know, not a tall guy, but a pretty broad and strong guy. And I remember having to go to his apartment and help him clean up because he wasn't taking care of himself, and I lifted him up and brought him to the washroom, and he felt like a baby in my arms. And then you think about your dad, like maybe when they're really, really old, they'll be, that might happen, but he was not that old, and to lift him up and feel like a child in my arms, it was really, like it breaks your spirit to see that kind of thing happen. But I remember he had been hospitalized multiple times in those last couple of months, and the doctor said to him, your body's falling apart, you're going to die, the reason why you're collapsing in any of the hospitals is because you're no longer eating food. He was at the end stage of alcoholism where you just drink and you don't eat. And the doctor said, you're going to die. You're going to die. And my dad looked up and said, I don't want to die, I want to live. And at that time, when he said he wants to live, it was that moment of opportunity, where someone says they want to live and they want to get help, that if you don't find the right care, you've missed the opportunity. And because we didn't have any private insurance, because we didn't have access to the rehab centers that my dad had before, we were really afraid because there's not readily available rehab centers. So we looked around, and luckily, there was a bed available at a publicly funded rehab center called Brentwood in Windsor. And he got admitted. He did the 90-day program, and he got better. And that actually turned his life around. Now he's a doctor, practicing again. He's really healthy. But that rehab center that was publicly funded saved his life, and it saved my family in a lot of ways. And that's why I really passionately believe that your job status or your salary should not determine the healthcare that you get, that everyone in our country should get healthcare when they need it. That's what I really believe in.
So we're just going to make sure we can get to all of the questions that are on the floor. So we're going to have the questions and the answers brief. We're going to race through it. Ma'am?
It's mostly my fault there. You're giving brief questions. I'll get us, cut it down. Okay, I'll try hard.
I think it's brief. So you mentioned that there was a federal agency that hadn't processed the information it received about money laundering. Is that FinTrak?
No. It was, there was a department specifically dedicated to money laundering. So it was, FinTrak is an organization that kind of tracks financial transactions and monitors them. There was a division that was specifically dedicated to money laundering. It was named the Money Laundering Division. We asked a question on this in question period. So it was set up. You have a follow-up question?
I do, I do. I just, so lawyers in Canada do not report to FinTrak. And in Peter German's second report, he talks about that. Have you, are you familiar with that problem?
Yeah, so on the disclosure requirements for lawyers, one of the, this is really technical, but one of the concerns is that if someone goes to a lawyer, there is, there's certain considerations around if a lawyer should provide information that might incriminate their client. But there are ways to clamp down on this. There's things that are very obvious that should not be happening, that lawyers should be able to disclose. So there's ways for us to look at how we modify the laws to protect the principle of not incriminating your client, but there should be reporting when things are very glaringly wrong. So there's a way to get at that. I think that's an important point that you're raising, and there's a way for us to find a way that if you're a lawyer, you're acting for a client, and there's something really off, there's got to be a way to report that. But the money laundering division I was speaking of can actually do a lot of this outside of the legal or out of the lawyer relationship with our clients, and they're not doing it at all. So there's an entire division dedicated to tracking money laundering that is just not doing that job. It's just not been given the mandate or staffed up. And we asked a question why that was happening. We didn't get a sufficient answer, but there is a department that's dedicated to money laundering that is just not working on money laundering. And it's not the workers' fault. They're just not been given that mandate to do it. There's a budget set aside, and there's an opportunity to staff up. They're just not being assigned that work. And that's something we would change immediately.
Sorry, what was that agency?
So it's, the department is the money laundering department, but I can tell you the specific agency. I don't have that with, that information with me right now. But we asked a question in the same question period because it came to our attention. In fact, it was raised by the Auditor General. They found that there was a division that had a budget set aside, but it wasn't actually doing that work. And then we built on the work of the Auditor General who found this and asked the question saying, well, if this is the case, why aren't we fixing this? We didn't get an answer from the government, but it's something that's been ongoing for at least the previous Conservative government and this current Liberal government. So it's something that we can totally change.
Okay, we'll go to the next question, please.
Hi, my name is Gene. I am a retired paper worker. Used to work in a paper recycling mill just across the river in Burnaby. And in the last 11 years and during my retirement, I've become heavily involved in the climate justice movement. I agree with Simon Robinson, the candidate in North Burnaby Seymour, when he says that this election is our last chance to turn things around in terms of the climate. I think that it's a lot more urgent than any of the parties are acknowledging, relying only on the IPCC report from two years ago or a year and a half ago, which is like, it's outdated already. But what I wanted to point out was that after the election, there's still going to be a fight going on. I don't want to be negative, but I think it's unlikely that the Greens or the NDP who are together are going to form a majority government. So hopefully, we will have a minority government with both of those parties, your party and the Greens.
If you can ask your question.
Putting pressure on the existing government. By helping the existing movement around the Green New Deal, around the students who are fighting for their futures every Friday, around the climate strike that will be happening the month before the election, and even perhaps around Extinction Rebellion, what will you do in whatever position you are after the election to help that movement grow and strengthen?
Thank you for the question. The climate urgency is, it is just one of the biggest struggles that we're facing right now. There's no question about it. And it's not a distant future issue. We're feeling it right now. I talked about the Sauk Eye and Chinook. It's a real impact on the way of life. Forest fires in B.C. that have been record in their duration, their intensity. We've seen massive flooding in eastern Canada. I went to communities that have seen their homes swept away. The climate urgency is now. It's not a distant future, and I am, I am all the way with you. And that's why we propose a new deal. And our new deal is one that marries the two concerns. We've got to have economic justice and environmental justice. We can't have one or the other. They're both incredibly important. So I'm committing right now to you that this is something that I care deeply about. I am very serious about fighting, and I'm running to become Prime Minister of Canada to fight the climate crisis and to lift up people who are facing economic inequality. In any way that I can, I'm going to fight to make sure we protect our planet, the air we breathe, the water we drink. This is something incredibly important to me, and I'm going to fight hard to bring in our policies, which are going to reduce emissions, invest in public transit, reduce the emissions of buildings, focus on ending fossil fuel subsidies immediately, reinvesting into renewable energy. We've got a host of policies in our, in our new deal to fight climate change, and this is something I take very deeply seriously.
Hello, Jagmeet. My name's Paul Atwell. I'm a kinesiologist, and I'm starting a business called Mara Health and Wellness. For the last 10 years, I've been working in the public health sector, dealing with the disabilities that the staff actually gets. And the issue that I've seen is burnout is a massive problem with healthcare staff and physicians. And to be honest, I kind of know what the solution is, and it's all related to our current system and the way it's funded and set up. And we really need to move towards a prevention model that is more inclusive instead of just waiting until somebody is off work and disabled. I want to know what your thoughts are around this issue.
Well, you're absolutely right that, like, our healthcare model is one of responding to illness as opposed to looking at prevention, and that is something we absolutely have to change. And there's so much expertise, and I'm sure you know this better than I, but the social determinants of health, if you want people to be healthy, if people have opportunities to live in a good place, eat good food, and opportunities to be physically active, they're going to be healthy. We can prevent a lot of illness. So there's no question about that. One of the first steps that I believe will help us go in that direction is with our current model, we're seeing a lot of waste in the sense that someone can be diagnosed by a doctor with an illness that could be treated or maintained with medication. And because they can't access that medication or the medical device, they get more and more sick. And one of the most stark examples of this that I've heard to date is a paramedic I met just yesterday, actually, in Calgary or in Edmonton. And he told me a story about a young worker who was working at a job site. He was a laborer. He got the job recently. Didn't have a lot of money before. His paycheck was coming in a couple of weeks. So he's trying to stretch out his money, looked at his different costs, and he decided, I got to keep my car because I got to get to work. I can cut down on my food a bit, and I'm taking medication. He had one illness, and it was for epilepsy, for seizures. And he cut down on his medication a bit. He said, instead of taking two pills a day, which I'm prescribed, I'll take one pill one day and two another day. And while he was climbing up the ladder, he got a seizure, right? When he was handing something to someone, and he fell off the ladder, fell backwards, broke his hip, broke his femur, broke his ribs, and was taken to the hospital. And in the hospital, he was there with all these injuries, and the first thing the physician did, they found out his medical history. They found that he needed Dilantin, which is for epilepsy, which is the medication. He only took the one pill one day, two the other day. And they immediately put him on Dilantin. And the paramedics looked at this and said, this young guy needed Dilantin. He couldn't afford it, and he had to break his ribs, his hip, and his femur to get it. And he was in the hospital costing thousands of dollars because he couldn't afford his medication. That is just one example of if we could avoid that by putting that money into medication coverage, then we could expand our healthcare to look at preventative things, look at dental care being included in our healthcare system, vision and hearing care, looking at addictions and rehabilitation care, but also just looking at how we can create a preventative model because that is, that is the direction we need to go in.
Thank you. Next question.
Oh, good evening, Jagmeet. You probably know me.
I know you.
Yeah, Parker Tian. I'm a resident, in case I thought you didn't know me. So I'm a resident in Jagmeet's riding Burnaby South, and I'm also a former international student, not just a student because I got my permanent residence.
Hey, congratulations.
Of Simon Fraser University, and I'm pursuing my degree of computing science. I just want to start by commenting on your story that as a person living with mental health issues, I totally relate to your father and how this system, we navigate this system, it sometimes just causes issues, just doesn't work. But I want to ask a question more about my international student friends. So as you mentioned, we have a great immigration system, and it brings a lot of immigrants to our country, and a lot of them, we probably know, it's our international students or former international students at least. So, and we all know that with a guy from the south of our border, there will probably be more international students choosing Canada as the destination of their study. But the problem is, like, based on my observation, a lot of my friends who are international students find it's pretty hard to, like, stay in Canada upon their graduation, despite they want to. Like, although, even though they have, like, very good academic performance, sometimes better than Canadian local students, or even skilled work experience within Canada, I mean, partially that's thanks to our former.
If you could ask your question, please.
Sorry, former government's express entry system. So, and the situation is even worse for students who wants to start their own business. We have a start visa system, but as for big business who can get investments from certain agencies. So I'm just going to skip the rest of it. But Jagmeet, I'm just wondering, how is the NDP going to address, make the policy change for international students who are studying or who have studied in Canada and wishes to stay in Canada after their graduation, and especially for those who wishes to start a business in Canada?
Okay. Okay, thank you very much for the question. So, so you've touched on something that I do hear from, from a lot of students, that they're, they come to Canada, they choose to educate themselves here in Canada. They contribute to our economy by paying sometimes really exorbitant tuition fees, renting a place, contributing by buying things here because they need. So they're contributing to our society. I really like and respect the fact that we've got international students. I think they're great for our economy, great for our country. They bring in expertise international, different experiences, different knowledge, and I think it's really important. And I'm worried about some folks that kind of look at international students negatively. I think we need to be very clear. International students are great for our economy. It's unfair that they're having to pay so much in terms of their tuition fees. That's a separate topic that we've got to tackle. But they're great for our economy. And one of the things that troubles me, and I think you touched on, is that, so someone who comes here and chooses to get educated here, they understand the Canadian system, they're being trained in Canada, they're gaining experience in Canada, but there's no advantage when they apply for their immigration. Their path to becoming a citizen is not any easier, even though they've just trained here and got educated here. I think that's wrong. I think we've got to acknowledge that if someone gets trained here and educated here in Canada, understands the system, is learning about the Canadian, whatever the skill set they're learning, they're learning about it from a Canadian context, they're even more of an asset to us. So there should be an easier pathway for those folks to become citizens and to become permanent residents. I'm really excited that you've become one. That's awesome. But it's hard for a lot of people. And there's also a problem of a lot of people not knowing exactly what to expect. They're kind of told one thing from their consultants, and they come here, it's completely different. And so we need to make sure we make it very clear, this is what's happening, this is your path, these are the challenges that you're going to face. I think people need to know more about it. But what I would like to do is change it so that we acknowledge the advantage that these students are bringing and that we make their path easier and credit them for that. And then your point on student or young people that want to, or people who don't have the same means, if you're in an economic class, you bring in millions of dollars, you can get easier, you can get immigration easier. But if you're starting up a small business, you don't have that type of resource, it's completely different. That is a really important point. How do we encourage that type of entrepreneurship and acknowledge that in an immigration sense? I don't have an answer to that right now. I don't have a solution to that, but I acknowledge that that is a problem, that there's favoring towards someone who's got a lot of money but not someone who doesn't have the same means. And they might be able to start up a company that's successful and that does really well, but we don't have a way to acknowledge that in our current system. So thanks for bringing that up. It's something I got to look at, but I absolutely think we can make the process easier for students who go to school here.
So Jagmeet, if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is just to ensure that you hear all of the issues from the floor.
Yes.
Let's hear all the questions, and then you can respond accordingly.
Yes.
And I just urge everyone to keep your comments, your questions, very brief, two sentences. Sir?
I can do that.
All right. So my question's similar to the one previous, but it comes in particular when it comes to unemployment. What would an NDP government do to ease kind of the burden that international students have, such as being abused by employers, being underpaid, and things like that?
Okay.
Okay.
Let's keep them coming.
Ma'am?
Okay, my name's Alicia Ken. As a single mother of three special needs children who works, what are your plans on providing services for children with special needs, especially given that child and use special needs services actually denies a lot of children, even though there are set criteria, but they will only accept autism as a child who gets services?
Special needs, okay.
Okay, sir?
Hi, my name is Stephen Crozier, and I'm the candidate for South Surrey White Rock. Yeah, I was going to actually ask that as questions and see how well everyone did because I'm also a teacher. And my question is going to be about education. Affordability to be, pardon me, affordability is a hard thing to say. Affordability is a big problem, especially for young people. Housing is one part of it, but paying for their education is another. They end up with $30,000 to $50,000 in debt at the end of their, at the end of their education. They can't participate appropriately in our economy. We've got, we have a Minister of Finance who has actually said, you know, look forward to precarious employment. And I'd like to know how you're going to address these issues that are so fundamental for young people trying to join into our society.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Lynn Perrin, Farrell Consulting, but also with a group called Pipe Up Network. And I've been doing research on the Trans Mountain expansion for seven years now. And I guess I'd like to ask if, Jagmeet, you think it's possible for the government to spend about $10 billion on a pipeline and for us to actually make a profit off of it because we own that pipeline? If it's even possible? And where are those markets?
Thank you. Sarji?
Firstly, I'd like to thank you very much for being here and addressing our questions and answering them. My name is Sarji Chima, and I'm a federal government employee. For the past three and a half years, many of our staff have not been getting paid, and I'm not going to go on to it. I'm sure you know enough. I just want to know, what are your plans to do with the Phoenix Pay system to ensure that Canadians get paid for the work that they do so that they can serve, continue to serve Canadians every day?
Thank you.
Sir, go ahead.
Hi, Jagmeet. You previously advocated for raising the federal minimum wage to $15 per hour, but I know many Canadians are anxious that such legislation will cause worker salaries, worker benefits, and worker employment hours to decrease. So my question is, if elected, how would the federal NDP balance the needs of the small business owner with the working class?
Okay. Wow.
Sir, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kelly Carmichael, a researcher at BCIT, and I do research on smart grid and electric vehicles. And I've been following the clean fuel standard, and what I've noticed is everyone seems to And what I've noticed is everyone seems to be incentivized for providing electric cars and providing fuel for it, except the electric car batteries need to be replaced eventually. And there's no recycling incentive set up to cover the recycling. And there's no incentives on getting a replacement battery for the vehicles. So after 10 years or so, the vehicle is now worth less than what the battery costs. And I would like to know how, how we can solve that problem.
Thank you.
Hi Jagmeet, thanks for coming and answering our questions. I was just wondering with like the shift precarious work coming and corporations getting stronger and stronger, why free post-secondary education isn't in the election platform? As well as if, even if that division of money laundering was active, is the CRA, is the Canadian government actually strong enough to reclaim unpaid taxes by the billions that corporations owe? Thanks.
Ma'am?
First of all, I would like to thank you for hosting this session and opening it to everyone. And also to Surrey Board of Trade to support this session. My question is, I have limited political background and when it comes to making a decision to who to vote, I was worried, I really like some of your planning and what you're planning to do when you get elected. But I was worried that if I support NDP, then I'm splitting progressive votes that are going to Liberal and that actually makes Conservatives stronger. So that is one of my worry and also I'd like to thank you for supporting Kashmiris and standing up for human rights violations around the world and, you know, being, being a voice for people who are going through struggles. There's another question a friend of mine has, but I don't know if I can ask on her behalf.
Very quickly.
Okay, so her question is when it comes to the, the students in the college and they are picking up electives and correct me, Shahaneh, if I'm correct or not. They, they don't, international students get, don't get a choice to, they get a choice for, first to elect the subjects and then the locals get left later. So is, what is it that you can do about it? Is that the question?
Okay, thank you very much. Sir, and then ma'am, you're the last person.
Okay.
Thanks so much for coming. Just a quick question, there's over, and I'm sorry, I'm Brian, I work for Aurora. There's over 350,000 Canadians that are authorized to use medical cannabis from a nurse practitioner or a physician. Those patients have to pay GST, PST and the excise tax. So will removing taxes on medical cannabis be part of the NDP platform? Thanks.
Okay, and ma'am?
Okay.
Jagmeet?
Hi.
Thank you very much for coming today. And you've touched on a lot of things, including the environment and political stuff going on between Canada and SOTA, the border. One area that you touched on was our healthcare system, which is of great interest because you touched on the high cost of drugs, hospital beds. Another thing that is part of this picture is the high cost of hospital parking. When people have to decide if they're going to have lunch, if they're going to pay for their drugs or are they going to pay for the hospital parking that their family comes to, to visit them? When, to shorten a person's healing time, that's when, as you've already stated, that's when you need your family. So when we went through an issue for seven months, spending $1,600 on hospital parking. I tried to claim it on income tax and was told, no, you can't claim it because it's not a prescription. I wasn't there for the fun. I was there directed by doctors, specialists for treatment plan, testing, all the rest of that stuff. So there's a lot of people out there, including your family, that really needs help with something to be done about the high cost of hospital parking.
Was that in one year?
I'll sit down and, and I'll listen to you.
Was that in one year?
Yes, it was in seven months.
$1,600?
Yes.
Wow, okay, thank you for sharing.
Okay Jagmeet, I know you can't respond to everything, but if you can, just for two minutes.
Two minutes, okay, wow, it's gonna be tough. I took so many notes, I thought I would have, so I, wow. Okay, I'm gonna just try to find some, some, some themes. Okay, I got students, affordability, precarious, so precarious employment is one theme sort of, education. And I got Phoenix I'll do for sure and then, okay, okay, I got a couple of things. I'm sorry, it's gonna be hard to, obviously apologies that I can't cover everybody. One of the things that, that's helped change my life around was because I was able to get into school and school was affordable. When I went, I went to undergrad, it was $2,000 a year for tuition and I went to law school for $8,000 a year. The same law school today is cutting, coming close to $30,000 a year. That means a lot of people that are in financial tough situations like I was, can't even imagine going to school. And so that's why I firmly believe in free tuition. We believe in, it's part of our commitments in the platform to make post-secondary education, college or university, a part of our public education system. We believe it should be free, there should be no barriers for people. If a young person wants to go to school, they should be able to go to school. That's why I believe in it. The kind of worry about supporting us, I, I want to just touch that because that's something that a lot of people are bringing up. When you look at governments in Ottawa, even if it's a liberal government, like Mr. Trudeau, Mr. Trudeau said a lot of nice things. And it's true, like I was pretty excited by those things too. He sounded pretty nice. But if you look at his track record, he did the same thing, he's not the same as a Conservatives. Of course Conservatives, they've said some scarier things, but if you look at their priorities in terms of who they were, who are they working for? I put it to you, and there's lots of evidence, that Mr. Trudeau and Mr. Shear are both in it to work for the multi-billionaires. And I'll give you examples, the SNC scandal, SNC Levin scandal is not a scandal, it was a choice to help a multi-billion dollar corporation. They also promised to reduce the cost of medication and they broke that commitment. Mr. Trudeau broke that commitment to reduce the cost of drugs because in four years, he met with the pharmaceutical industry, his government met with them over 600 times. And so they abandoned a commitment that would have reduced the cost of medication. In Canada, we pay the highest cellphone fees in the world because Conservatives and Liberals allowed the big telecom companies to basically rip us off. Other countries similar to us pay half of what we pay. Australia pays half of what we pay. And so we're proposing putting in a price cap, making sure that there's truly unlimited data plans and making sure our cellphone and internet is affordable. So we've got the courage to stand up. So I say to you this, if you want someone on your side who's going to make sure that you, your families, your small businesses, working people are put at the center of everything we do, someone who's going to fight for you to make sure we make your life easier, not the life of the multi-billionaires easier, you need new Democrats on your side. And I'm confident we will be your champions and fight for you and lift you up and support your concerns. And so anywhere you can elect a new Democrat, you should elect a new Democrat, I think, because it's going to be someone who's on your side, fighting for you, not going to back down. If a lobbyist comes through and says, okay, she, that's a bad plan, it's going to make us lose some money. We're, we're in it for people and I think that's what people need. Okay, I'll, I'll wrap up on Phoenix because that's so horrible and precarious employment and then I'll have to call it. So in a country as rich as ours, there is no, there is no, I can't even say, there is no justification. There's no way it's possible that at a minimum, we can't pay the people that are running our country. There's no way we can justify that. So I tell you this, that I do not accept that it's not possible to fix this. I do not accept that an entire country, one of the G7 nations in, in the world, cannot make sure people get paid. I don't accept any of the excuses that Conservatives or Liberals are bringing forward. Conservatives who bought the Phoenix, Liberals who put it in place, I do not accept that it cannot be fixed, that we cannot find a way to make this a priority and make sure that everyone gets paid. I do not accept it can't be done, I will get it done. No, no questions about it. And then last, last one on precarious employment, life is getting precarious. I don't accept that that's the way things should go. I don't agree with Mr. Moreno who says just get used to it. I think we need to make sure we impose or put forward protections for workers. So I believe in the $15 federal minimum wage to show the example of where we should go in terms of livable wages. I know we need to support small businesses at the same time, but when it comes to precarity, right now, people do not have long-term, long-term jobs like the way they had before. They don't have benefits, the way they used to have benefits. And so because they don't have benefits, because they don't have the same predictability in terms of their jobs, there's a lot of freelance work, there's contract work. I don't think your benefits should depend on the employment you have. And I believe that our healthcare system should be like the other healthcare systems in the world that cover you from head to toe. Many other countries do this where your dental care is included, your vision and eye care is included. You don't rely on your benefits at a job to get your healthcare you need. It's provided as a part of a comprehensive healthcare system and that's what I really believe in. So we're starting with medication coverage for all, but we want to go beyond that to include dental care. Because why is it that you can get open heart surgery, you can get complex therapy, but you can't get your teeth taken care of? I don't accept that we can't include that into our healthcare system. I believe we can do it and we must do it and this is going to help out those precariously employed by giving them the benefits they need. Because once you're healthy, you can take on challenges, but when you don't have health, then everything else is so incredibly impossible. So that's one of the ways to tackle the precarity by giving people the benefits included in our healthcare system. Looking at EI, we want to change it so that it's not the past system where you had to work with a job, be with it stably to be able to get EI. We want to look at a universal kind of system of doing it where you get 360 hours cumulative and you take your best 12 weeks or best, yeah, best 12 weeks and 360 hours to be able to qualify. That way, contract workers or freelance workers or precariously employed will actually get benefits. We need to reimagine our safety network to include those who are no longer working stable full-time jobs so they're supported and, and helped out. And I think we can do that. I'm sorry I can't get all your questions, but I hope it gives you a sense of what I care about and how we can make a better future. Thank you.
So Jagmeet, you are going to stay a little bit afterwards to, to meet with the audience. Thank you so much. You know, one of the other things that's so important to Surrey, to British Columbia and really to Canada, our investments in our ports. That's how we consume goods with all the free trade agreements. We need to participate actively and efficiently in our global economy. And to provide closing remarks is our sponsor from the Vancouver Fraser Port Authority, Mr. Duncan Wilson.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much Anita and thank you very much Jagmeet. And now that I know how to pronounce your name properly, I'll spread the word.
Thank you.
I'm impressed, I was really impressed by your personal story. Thank you for sharing that with us and also thank you for being open and, and being able to answer so many people's questions. Anita and the Surrey Board of Trade is a tremendous partner to the, the Port of Vancouver, obviously Board of Trade. I think there's a hint in the name. The port is responsible for, for handling about one-third of all of Canada's non-North American trade. And just to give you some perspective, right here in Surrey, I have some numbers. In Surrey, that represents 5,000 jobs, $350 million in wages and $1.3 billion in economic activity just in this community alone. And that trade is growing. It's growing at a, at a, at a significant rate and represents a good opportunity for us to create good, high-paying jobs where people can actually afford to live in the communities, some of the issues you were talking about today. So again, thank you very much, Mr. Singh, and thank you very much Anita for the good work that the Surrey Board of Trade does. It's been our pleasure to support today's event. Thank you.